It's like we're up and running. It is four o'clock, so I will call the January 11th, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order. First, I would ask that the confirm with staff that the Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will have a roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would please ask those in attendance to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. It does look like we have a proclamation, item 3.1.
Item 3.1, the day of January 18th, 2021, is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the city of Salina. Ramona Malone, New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church Minister of Music, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Ramona. Let's, there, we got you unmuted, so, welcome.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Mayor Hoppick and the Commission and all in attendance. Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., 2021. Whereas the 18th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. And whereas, in paying tribute to Dr. King, we are reminded that the duty lies with each of us to fulfill the vision of his life's work. Let us use our time, talents, and resources to give back to our community and help those less fortunate than us. Particularly today, let us not forget Dr. King's own tireless spirit and efforts as we work, celebrate, and pray alongside people of all backgrounds. As one people, let us rediscover the bonds of love and loyalty that bring us together as Americans and as people who share a common humanity. Now, therefore, I, Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 18th, 2021, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commem- there, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have here to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 11th, 2021. Michael L. Hoppick, Mayor, City of Salina.
Thank you, Ramona. I know with COVID, it makes it hard to do anything, but do we have any celebrations scheduled where we can do that socially distancing or anything?
That was the plan, but due to several individuals experiencing COVID, and we actually had Ms. Eleanor Jones, she and I kind of were kind of keeping this going the last couple of years. She had two strokes. So she is fairly incapacitated at this time, so we're praying for her, but we really wanted to do something virtual. This will be a year when we don't have buttons. I mean, there's just, this was, this was a challenging opportunity. However, I believe that, I hadn't gotten confirmation, but I believe that K-Dev is still, Kansas Wesleyan is still going to have something. And I believe Irvin Smith told me that, that there will be something on that Monday noon as per normal for the youth. So I didn't get confirmations from him on that, but when I spoke with him earlier, I'm pretty sure that he is definitely doing the one at St. John's Missionary Baptist on Monday, the 18th. But there will not be a citywide celebration, virtual or otherwise, on the 17th, which is a sad thing for me. But, but we can all, if nothing else, acknowledge the weekend, acknowledge the day, and pray that we just continue to move forward as a city and as a nation.
Exactly. Thank you for your words, and I look forward to being able to celebrate next year with you in person. Thank you very much for being with us.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I just, it just came to my mind, just a bit of interest with regard to this. I was contacted in August from a gentleman in New York, which I figured it was a scam, but I answered my phone anyway. This gentleman, Mr. Bill Oliver, is a button collector and somehow acquired a few of our buttons, reached out to Pronto Print, then contacted me, and over a course of a couple of months, we presented to him essentially every button that has been produced through this celebration, and he then sent a small token. We didn't, we didn't ask him to pay for them, you know, but he sent a small token for the MLK Committee and said, when you get some more, the next time you have them, please put me on your list, and you guys are doing a great job. So I thought I would. That is one incredible piece of information that just says that this is not just a small-town Salina thing. This gentleman was in Brooklyn, New York, and acknowledged that we have something really cool going on here because he'd never seen buttons before.
Cool story. So how many, how many buttons did you send him?
We, you would make me try to count. I believe, I would have to look at my notes because I didn't think about that. I just remembered it just now, but it was every button that we have had from the inception, in addition to a little bit of history of the MLK Ahha Committee and Baccos that kind of began that, and he was very appreciative.
Thank you for sharing that story with us. Have a good day.
Thank you, you as well.
Okay, that brings us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for individuals who would like to address the Commission about something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name and where you're from, and limit your comments to five minutes or less. I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood to explain how to raise your hand and be acknowledged.
All right, thank you, Mayor Hoppick. I'll go over, I got a little short presentation here I'll provide. Okay, so for public comment, what we'd like you to do is raise your hand. You can do that if you're on a Windows machine, you can go down to the Participants tab here. You click on that button, that will bring up the Participants box. And on the right bottom of that, you'll see some sort of a box here, might have three dots, it might say Raise Hand right there. Go ahead and click that. There should be a Raise Hand option, and then you'll, on, it'll raise your hand. And then on iPads, it's a little bit different. The controls are actually at the top right of the screen, so you can click on the Participants button there, and it will give you the option to click on your name, and then it'll give you the option to raise your hand. Or if that doesn't work, you can slide over to the More tab and just scroll down to the Raise Your Hand button. Click on that, and that should work for you. If, if all else fails, hit the Chat button there, and you can send me a message. It'll be a private message that goes just to me. Or if you're, you got a video out there and you want to just kind of wave, we'll see if we can't get you on. So with that, let me stop my screen share, and I think we've at least got one hand already raised. It's like Lanay Meyer has her hand raised. Let me give you the option to unmute there.
Shall I talk now?
Yeah, go ahead and tell us your name, and I think most of us know you, so.
I'm Lanay Meyer, and I'm here from Salina, and I just walked in the door a few minutes ago, so I missed the discussion before, except for the tail end, so I don't know the details. But I kind of gathered that there is some maybe a move to not stay involved with the Salina media. If that's the case, I, I am really upset. I think the city needs to continue their connection with Salina media. I think it would be a disgrace for us not to support community involvement in, in the media. They can do so much. No, it's not perfect, but none of us are either. So if I caught the gist of what was happening, I just want to say, please, please reconsider if you're thinking about doing away with the media covering, covering the meetings. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Lanay. Appreciate it. Mr. Wood, do we have anyone else with their hand raised?
I don't see any other hands at this time, Mayor Hoppick.
Okay. With that, we will move into the Consent Agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor Carl Ryan here. I move to approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for January 4th, 2021. We will do a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, that will lead us into Administration.
Item 7.1, authorize the fire department to purchase one new ambulance chassis, refurbishment, and remounting of the patient module of existing ambulance and one Stryker power cot.
Okay, is Chief Royce available?
I am.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Kevin Royce, Fire Chief. I'm here today to ask or seek authorization to purchase one new ambulance chassis, one new Stryker power cot, and to refurb an existing patient module of one of our ambulances. As you may recall, in 2019, the department began what's known as a remount program, and in lieu of purchasing new ambulances, we actually send one of our old ambulances back, have the patient module box taken off, refurbished, placed on a new chassis, and returned. And by doing this, we're easily saving anywhere from 35 to 40 percent. Most new ambulances now going for easily over 250,000. We've got the cost down to about, in the 180s by doing it this way. This will be our third ambulance we're, we're doing this to, and we've had nothing but success and no problems with the previous two. The department wishes to utilize Osage Ambulance for this remount process pursuant to meeting the single-source selection method of the city's purchasing policy, and specifically, it's for continuation of an existing project or continuity of similar services in which past performance is considered acceptable and knowledge of the specific works has been demonstrated. Osage has performed the remount process on the prior two ambulances. I've listed specific issues that would meet this requirement in the bullet points, and would be glad to answer any of those questions that you have on them at this time before I move on.
Okay.
All right. The department budgeted $200,000 for the purchase of this unit. The cost of this new chassis, patient refurb, and a new power cot is coming in at 183,600. And this cost is reimbursed by Saline County per an inter-local government agreement. I'd be glad to answer any questions on this, the whole process, before I move to the recommendations.
Continue.
Okay. This department wishes to authorize a purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment of an existing patient module, and a new Stryker power cot from Osage Ambulances in the amount of $183,600. Other option is do not authorize the purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment of the patient contact, or patient module, and a Stryker power cot in the, in the price of $183,600 from Osage Ambulances. And staff is recommending number one.
Okay, Chief, Chief Royce has asked if there were any questions. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Chief Royce?
It strikes me, this isn't a question, but last year we paid 184,600, and this year it's exactly $1,000 less?
Yes.
That's interesting.
It's, yeah. In a good way, in a good way. I will, I will, I will mention one thing, though, that the CARES funding that we received this year has made a big difference in this, this particular situation. Because with that CARES funding, we were able to go back and actually retrofit all of our ambulances with the power cot module that actually loads the patient into the ambulance. So that's why you're gonna, that's why I saved about $16,000 by using that CARES money to do that. So that was very, very beneficial to the department and to the city as a whole.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wood, is there anyone out there that has their hand raised with a question or comment? I'm gonna take that as a no.
I don't see any at this time. Sorry, had my mic.
With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we authorize the department purchase of one new ambulance chassis, two, the refurbishment and remounting of the patient module of an existing ambulance, and three, one new Stryker power cot from Osage Ambulances in the amount of $183,600.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment and remounting of a module, and one new Stryker power cot. We will do a roll call at this time.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz? Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. We have no development business at this time. So it appears, based on my agenda, that it's time for my comments as an outgoing mayor. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you're all lucky. Some people say I don't listen to my wife very often, but my wife always tells me that if you're gonna talk, you always want to leave them wanting more. So I'll try to make this somewhat short, but hopefully meaningful to all of you. One of the questions I was asked multiple times this year is, boy, I bet you wish you weren't mayor during COVID-19. And I have to answer just the opposite. It was a pleasure to serve as Mayor of Salina during this time, and it was also very rewarding to be surrounded by the Commissioners that I have and the city staff that represents the city. Even though we had a lot to deal with when it came to COVID-19, I'm proud of where we're at today because of some of the things that we have done. I think we took the correct steps to protect the city budget. We were able to furlough some employees while putting others on a shared work program. Taking advantage of the CARES Act, we were able to protect our employees and keep them whole financially at the same time. Surprisingly, our sales tax, sales tax numbers have remained fairly stable during 2020. With the planning and implementation by the Commission with city staff guidance, we have increased our general fund balance from 7 million at the beginning of the year to a projected balance of 9.8 million, and I think we all should be very proud of that. There are also several other accomplishments during 2020. We, even though we were dealing with COVID, we didn't take our eye off the ball of other items that needed to be accomplished. The city reached an agreement for a long-term lease with Saline County on the Expo Center. With the lease agreement, Saline County has agreed to make significant upgrades to the buildings, and when completed, the facility will tie in nicely with the exterior of the Tony's Pizza Event Center. The city of Salina and Saline County have collaborated on a new emergency radio communication system. This system will benefit both the city and county, and this was necessary, obviously, due to the change in the bandwidth. A settlement was reached with the federal government on the Schilling Air Force Base groundwater remediation. The, the federal government has now deposited 65 million with the city for remediation. With the hard work of staff, KDHE, and our consultants, we believe that we have come up with a, a way to remediate our current issue. Originally, if you remember, we thought that price tag to the taxpayers could be as much as $10 million. We now believe that that could be as low as a million, not to exceed 5 million. A new place, police training facility was opened up during 2020. This facility has an indoor shooting range, a large classroom, storage for vehicles, and a 300-degree simulator. The Training Center should help us with recruiting, recruitment of future police officers while helping to ensure that we have a well-trained police force. The investment in downtown during a pandemic still amazes me. The Leelots are now open and offer both market and non-market rate apartments. The KU School of Medicine and Nursing is in the process of finishing off the remainder of the building that they now own. New businesses continue to pop up along Santa Fe. The Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America is now under construction. The Homewood Suites is now open and anchors the south end of the downtown development. And for those of you who had a chance, the Stiefel Theater has renovated the new, their building, and the lights on that are just fabulous. And I believe it was Mr. Anderson, Brad Anderson, that said that it appears now that we may be known as the City of Lights. Private investors have also started construction on a new baseball, softball training facility downtown that will also help bring people to the, to the downtown area. We have seen tremendous announcements dealing with business expansion this year. Schwann's announced a new 600,000-square-foot expansion to their current facility that will bring in 2022, 200-plus jobs to Salina, making that facility the largest pizza-making plant in the world. Even though it, it was sad for us to announce that the Signify, formerly known as Phillips, is leaving our community, Kubota sliced Great Plains Manufacturing at the same time announced that they are purchasing the Signify facility, will be moving a new product line to Salina from Japan. Part of the excitement about this is not only that it is going to continue to keep jobs in Salina, but they will only occupy approximately 150,000 to 200,000 square feet of a 750,000-square-foot building, therefore leaving a lot of extra room for continued expansion in the, in their facility. Again, I tried to keep it short. I think we, as a commission, and I would like for Mike to thank staff for the hard work that's been done during the year 2020, a year that's seen a lot of other communities fall behind. If anything, I think Salina has taken tremendous steps to move forward in the future. Thank you. And with that, with that, we will move to 9.2.
Item 9.2, consideration of a motion to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting the organizational meeting.
Do I have a motion?
David, so moved.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
We have a motion and a second to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting the organizational meeting. We will do a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye.
Okay, I will now call the organizational meeting of January 11th, 2021 to order and do roll call. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
I will now accept nominations for Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Davis, I move to nominate Commissioner Hodges as Mayor and Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Franz, I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion and a second. I will now call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
That motion carries 5 to 0. I will now accept nominations for Acting Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Hodges here. I move to nominate Commissioner Davis as Acting Mayor and Vice Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
I have a motion and a second. I will now call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
That motion carries 5 to 0. I will now turn the meeting over to the new mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Wex. I am sorry that we aren't going to be able to conduct this meeting in person so that I can hand over the plaque of appreciation and the gavel personally to Mayor Hoppick. But I did want to share a brief statement. First, I'll start by reading what's on his plaque of appreciation. This plaque is given in recognition of service rendered by Michael L. Hoppick as Mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, January 13th, 2020 to January 11th, 2021. And I would just like to say, I don't know if this is kosher to say at this time, but I would like to say that Mayor Mike Hoppick deserves a great deal of praise and recognition for his steady leadership in 2020. It's an understatement to say that 2020 was a tough year. Mayor Hoppick helped the governing body and the city staff address the impact that COVID-19 had, not only on our community, but on every single aspect of our organization, our people, our finances, our facilities, our programming. He led us through some difficult conversations about race and policing and the establishment of a citizens' review board. And most importantly, and this is the example that I hope to follow in 2021, Mayor Hoppick kept our discussions civil, on point, and moving forward. Thank you, Mike, for setting such a strong example to follow and for leading, leading us through what I had anticipated would be the most challenging year ever in Salina's history. But it does turn out that Salina, like our nation, may face another challenging year ahead. So thank you very much. I appreciate all the hard work you've done to get us through 2020. So a round of applause for Mayor Hoppick, please.
Thank you.
With that, I guess that brings to me to some very brief comments. I'm not going to keep you here long. First of all, like all of you did when your terms for mayor started, I want to send my love and my thanks to my dear family. As all of you know, it would be impossible to do this job without our families. To Boo and our sons and daughters-in-law, Ted and Taylor, Grant and Jillian, baby Nora, my mother, and yes, even Roscoe, the dog that you hear barking occasionally in the background, to our friends of the Wolf Pack. It's my hope that we can resume our weekly meals and debates in the months ahead. Each of you has been a tremendous source of support and encouragement, and I'll be leaning on you in 2021. Thanks to you, members of the governing body, for your service and for your vote. Our deliberations together the last four years have demonstrated that ultimately, despite some pretty contentious debate, we all want the best for Salina and her citizens. And even as we disagree about how to achieve that outcome, at the end of the day, or I probably should say at the beginning of the week, we're still able to come together to deliberate again, and that's a big deal. So for 2021, I, it's my hope that we'll continue to work toward greater public engagement and greater transparency in our actions. We'll continue to encourage diverse points of view, demonstrate mutually respectful discourse within our governing body, and in turn, expect it from the citizens that we serve. We'll continue to build a stronger organization, work to empower our employees, and to recognize the essential contributions of our frontline workers. We'll continue our progress on large-scale, long-term projects like the Schilling Air Force Base remediation and the Smoky Hill River renewal. We'll continue to work to take better care of our existing assets, our parks, our streets, and our infrastructure. And we'll continue to address the many ways that COVID has impacted and will continue to impact our citizens and our economy, our city revenues and programming and facilities. We will continue to do our best to make data-driven decisions in the interests of public safety and ask you, the citizens of Salina, to please continue wearing your masks, practicing social distancing, wash your hands, and above all, when it's your turn, please get your COVID vaccinations. We all want to return to a more normal life. One of my campaign slogans was, "Good government begins at home." Salina's nonpartisan, no Democrats or Republicans here, just Salina city commissioners, reminds us that we shouldn't let what divides us nationally divide us here in our community, where we are surrounded by and accountable to our family, friends, neighbors, and businesses. So to wrap this up, and I believe this is a quote I first heard at a city commission meeting, I'm going to paraphrase Nelson Mandela. Despite the challenges that we will face in 2021, I'm hoping that our planning and our decisions and ultimately the actions that we take will reflect our hopes and not just our fears. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, back to Ms. Wicks.
Item ten point seven, consideration of a motion to resume the regular meeting for the purpose of completing other business.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I move that we resume the regular meeting.
Commissioner Davis, second.
I'll call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much, Shandy. Wicks, our city clerk, for running our organizational meeting. We will continue with item eleven, other business. We have two requests for executive sessions. Is there any other business that the commission would like to bring up prior to our first executive session?
I do have one update for you, following up on last week's meeting, when appropriate.
Absolutely. Please go ahead, Mr. Strick.
Our conversation last week about Campbell Plaza and the request to redevelop Campbell Plaza, you asked staff to coordinate with SDI about getting the word out to the public as well as soliciting SDI's input. And so had a conversation with Penny Bettles, the executive director, provided her a copy of the proposal and the site plan and a cover memo explaining the request that we've received. And they will have successive meetings of their, their executive board and then their full board Thursday of this week and then Thursday of next week. And so coordinating with her to get her the information and get feedback from SDI as a body as well as to get the word out to the general public. So it appears to me that we're probably looking at the end of the month, first meeting of next month, to be able to bring that back to you on your agenda.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much, Mr. Strick. I appreciate the update. Does anyone have any questions about that or any other items to bring up? With that, we'll move to item eleven point one, request for executive session personnel.
I guess since we have not officially shuffled our chairs, I'll continue the responsibility here. Commissioner Davis here. I move the, I'm sorry, how many minutes for this person?
Thirty.
Okay. I move the city commission recess into executive session for thirty minutes to discuss the subject of the status of a personnel matter under the city manager's purview based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-v-one. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and city of Salina YouTube channel at five oh seven PM.
Commissioner Hoppick, second.
We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for thirty minutes, resuming at five oh seven. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. And there is a note that possible action may follow our executive session. Thank you.
Okay, this is Deputy Sa- City Manager Jacob Wood. I will go ahead and open the room. You should have an invitation to join the executive session. Everybody else who's outside the room, the meeting will remain until we're back.
I don't know my, I just lost my internet. I don't know what happened, so.
You're back.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion. Mayor Hodges, I move that based upon the update provided in executive session regarding a personnel matter under the purview of the city manager, the law firm of Clark, Mize, and Linville, as the city's legal counsel, be authorized to direct the expert engaged by the law firm as authorized by the governing body on September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, to proceed to the next phase of evaluation of information relevant to the personnel matter.
Do we have a second? Mayor Hodges, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call, except I'm not sure Ms. Wicks is here, so I'll just go ahead and do that.
No, I think she, I think she's there.
Oh, okay. All right.
Commissioner Davis?
Here, I mean, aye. Sorry.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. That'll bring us up to item eleven point two, another request for an executive session on personnel. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Hoppick. How long do you think that we're going to need on this item?
I'd like to say twenty, but you want to go ahead and go thirty?
What? I'm feeling lucky today. As I'm downloading the Zoom app for my phone, let's go, let's go twenty minutes so that, is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, there is. Madam Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four-three-one-nine-v-one. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the city of Salina YouTube channel at five thirty-one PM.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for personnel matters. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. We will resume in the open meeting at five thirty-one PM. Is everyone here and unmuted? At this juncture, we do not have any action to follow, and we will resume discussion. We'll plan for an executive session, not next Monday because of Martin Luther King Junior Day, but after. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Question, Mayor, would the next meeting would be with the city manager in attendance?
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
That was either a smile that the city manager had or a grimace, and I'm not sure.
No, I appreciate the clarification.
Oh, yeah. Sorry, sorry about that. I'm new to this game and didn't mean to freak.
No, no.
Don't apologize.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hoppick here. I make a motion we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Is Shandy still on the line for a roll call? If not, I will do it. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
She is? I'm here. Sorry, Shandy, I keep cutting you off.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. We will see you on the twenty-fifth.
Thank you all.